Welcome to the April fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Jack Manschreck of the Big Beaver United Methodist Church to provide us with the invocation. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation. Pastor, welcome.
Mayor Dane Council, friends. I'm just going to take a moment because this is my last time offering the blessing here because I am going to move to a new community and a new church in Nottiford, Michigan. I've been here for eleven years and I have been blessed. Have you been blessed in Troy?
Yeah.
Remember that. When God called God's people together, the God of Abraham, who is the father of the Christian faith, the Jewish faith, and the Islam faith, he said, "You are blessed and I'm going to bless you." He said, "But you're going to be blessed to be a blessing to others." So friends, as we live here in Troy and receive the great blessings of this community, don't take that for granted. Know that you are blessed to be a blessing to others. I've had four children in this community, graduate from the high schools here, go Red Hawks. And I've wanted us to just say it's been a wonderful time to be here and God bless the city who I love and will hold dear in my heart for many, many years. We also want to remember as we pray this evening, another city, Boston, and remember the devastation that is out there. I went to school in Boston and it's an awful tragedy that has happened there. I'm not even sure what the death toll is or those who are injured as it grows even probably now. With those things in mind, with the blessings and the concerns upon our hearts, let's pray. Gracious and precious God, we ask that your grace be upon us. We ask that your peace be all around us, that calm hearts and cool minds will prevail, and that the memory of the great blessings that you provide for us each and every day in this community will be passed on to others as we seek to be blessed in order to be a blessing to others. Guide the work of tonight's meeting. Be with those who are here to present. May the debate be civil, may the clarity of people's words bring a clarity to the hearts of others. And we ask for this in your precious and powerful name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is theirs, one nation under God, indivisible, with the regime of justice for all.
Thank you Pastor, and thank you for your service to Troy. God bless you. The Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Bitner?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Campbell. Mayor Protem Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
Councilmember Teetz?
Here.
They received a call from Councilman Campbell this afternoon and he will not be here this evening, so I resolved that the Troy City Council hereby excuses the absence of Councilman Campbell at the regular City Council Meeting of April the fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Mayor Protem Fleming that we excuse Councilman The vote, Ms. Bitner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Motion passes. It's going to be a fun start to the meeting this evening. We have four certificates of recognition and special presentations. So if we're ready for the first presentation, I'm going to ask Cindy Stewart of the Community Affairs Director to come forward and I will move down to the podium to present the proclamation.
We're going to present tonight a presentation to the Robert Allen Group, but I didn't see her, so I don't know if anyone is here from the Robert Allen Group yet. She might be running late. Okay. And is there someone here from MAD? They were supposed to be here, so we can pass on that one. Then our first one tonight is the Athens Student Congress, a commendation for raising over forty-one thousand dollars during Spirit Week. It's going to be presented to the Student Congress and the advisors, and if they would come up? Oliver.
I'm going to read the proclamation of recognition to Athens High School Student Congress. Whereas the Athens High School Student Congress is a very active group of fifty-one students and two advisors dedicated to giving back to their community as well as the region. And whereas each year the Athens High School Student Congress puts in countless hours as well as blood, sweat, and tears to help a charity of their choice during Charity Week. And whereas the Athens High School Student Congress selected Angels of Hope and All Volunteer Five-O-One-C-Three Foundation committed to making a difference in the lives of children and those who love and care for them as they battle cancer, realizing that cancer just didn't impact the patient, it impacts the entire family. And whereas this year the Athens High Student Congress gave back in a way that many teens and even most adults could not do by organizing a full week of activities including penny wars, restaurant nights, teacher court, volleyball tournaments, magic show, Mr. Athens pageant, T-shirt sales, dance, and much more. Athens Student Congress raised over forty-one thousand dollars this year for Angels of Hope. Way to be. They also raised more than thirty thousand dollars in two thousand and eleven for Believe in Miracles and in two thousand and twelve for Shirts Off Our Backs. And whereas the Student Congress generated excitement throughout the school's sixteen-hundred students as well as within the community. Congress meetings take place prior to school, starting and after a full day of classes. Members stay after school to count pennies, sell shirts, run the events, and then go home and complete their homework. There's not a lot of sleep for the Congress members during Charity Week. And whereas students find out how much money they raised at the Friday Pep Assembly and then celebrate their accomplishment with a final fundraiser that evening, the Glow Coming Dance. Now therefore be it resolved that the Troy City Council extends special recognition to the Athens High School Student Congress for their selfless and tireless service and dedication to so many worthwhile organizations over the years. And be it further resolved that Detroit City Council and all Troy residents congratulate the Athens Student Congress for being a shining example of how to give back to the community as well as the region and wish them continued success in all future endeavors. Presented this fifteenth day of April, two thousand and thirteen, and it's signed by me and all members of City Council. Congratulations.
Um, yes.
Okay.
Looking back at my high school experience, some of the most amazing memories have always come from Charity Week. And there's a moment at the end of the Pep Assembly where we hold up a sign that's a piece of paper that's covering the total and the whole sixteen-hundred students are standing behind us. And there's an incredible energy whilst all the students are waiting to see what we've achieved in one week because we have an insane week where we have penny wars, magic show, jail and bail, volleyball tournament, Mr. Athens Pageant, a raffle, corporate sponsors, student, a restaurant night, packets, T-shirt sales, and dance. And it all adds up to make a big impact. And this year we chose Angels of Hope as our charity and they recognize that a family who has a child or a parent suffering from cancer can't always focus on paying the bills as their main priority is to look after that member of family who's suffering from cancer. So they are there to put food on the table and take care of those bills. So it was an awesome charity which the students could really get behind. So as I dropped this piece of paper which was covering the total, I stepped back and the gym erupted and it said that we'd raised forty-one thousand dollars, which for me is incredible because it's almost the amount of debt I'm going to get into with college. But I think it really goes to show what a group of students can do and that we really can make a difference in the lives of others. And on behalf of Stuco, I'd like to thank the administration, the teachers, because I know that they are very patient and flexible and students may not be paying quite as much attention as they should during this week. And we couldn't do it without the city of Troy who are always supporting us, and thank you.
I will ask Cindy Stewart to come back up and we will do our next presentation.
Still nobody from Robert Allen or MAD? We were hoping. Athens, whoops. Tonight we also are going back to Athens. We have a proclamation and recognition of Krista Manfredi and the fortieth anniversary of the Athens Theater Company. So we'd like Krista to come up and anyone else she would like?
Gina Mancella's back there, but I bet he won't come up there. Gene Rooney's filming, so he's not coming up there.
I think if you support Krista, you want to come up here tonight. So come on up.
Michelle, Amy, Terri.
Come on.
Everywhere I go, it's really all the time too. I'm rarely alone.
You're blessed.
I am blessed, yes.
I'd like to read the proclamation and recognition of Krista Manfredi and the fortieth anniversary of the Athens Theater Company. Whereas Krista Manfredi began her teaching career with Troy School District as a part-time substitute teacher in nineteen seventy-two, seventy-three. That's when I got out of college. And the following year as a full-time substitute Troy High School teacher, substitute. And whereas during her time at Troy High, in addition to her teaching duties, Krista Manfredi volunteered her time with the theater teacher building sets, gathering props and costumes, doing programs, and anything else that was needed. And whereas the first production, You Can't Take It With You, was performed at Troy Union School as the auditorium at Troy High was not yet built. In nineteen seventy-three, seventy-four school years, Night of January Sixteenth was performed at Bullen School while they were still waiting the completion of the auditorium. And whereas in the nineteen seventy-four, seventy-five school year, Krista made the move to Athens High School as the theater teacher and director of Athens Theater Company. The first ATC performance was The Man Who Came to Dinner, and thus began a legacy of exceptional theater productions under her direction. And whereas to date Krista has done more than forty-five productions on the Athens stage in addition to children's theater, dinner theater, talent shows, dance theater, and much more. It is hard to determine exactly how many students have gone through Krista's theater program since she produces two and sometimes three productions in any given year. And whereas many of Krista's students have performed on Broadway, television, and in movies. And whereas as a teacher, Krista accepts and respects each student for who they are, but also expects each student to excel in all that they do and to reach out and help others along the way. And in this, she has great success with her peer mediation group each year. Now therefore be it resolved that Detroit City Council extends special recognition to Krista Manfredi for her dedication and devotion to the Athens High School's theater program and for her tireless service and dedication to the world of theater. And further be it resolved that Detroit City Council and all Troy residents congratulate Krista Manfredi for being such an inspiration to the students at Athens High School and wish her continued success in all endeavors. Presented this fifteenth day of April, two thousand and thirteen, it's signed by myself and the City Council of Troy. Congratulations on your four-year anniversary. And you're probably wondering what all of this equipment is here, and you're going to soon find out. So I'm going to turn the microphone over to Krista.
Okay, nobody else has to talk? I don't know. Did you want, did you want to say anything?
Come on up here. We need the microphone.
Yeah, thanks. Hi, some of you may know me, most of you might not. I'm very blessed to have had Krista as my drama teacher way back in the eighties when life was good and we didn't have cell phones and pagers and all this other stuff we have going on nowadays. But, you know, I came into my ninth grade year, that's very pivotal, and I had two directions which way to go. I could go with one set of friends who I wouldn't be where I am today, or I could have followed Krista's lead and literally pulled me by the ear and dragged me into those theater productions. And I'm still best friends with all my friends and have a very good career on Broadway, a few movies, nothing big, and some TV too, so. Just recently got married and moved back from LA. As much as I love the weather and everything, there's no better place to raise a child than in the school system, so I'm going to raise my daughter here and I'm coming for your seat in a couple of years.
You can have it.
But yes, I just want to say thank you, Mom. And you know, you've always been a mom to everybody, so thank you.
This woman has a speech too, though.
Please.
Marty represented the students and I'm representing the parents. My name is Michelle Tucker, and I've had the great honor and privilege of being friends with Ms. Manfredi for twenty-five years. My family first went to see our very first ATC production in the spring of nineteen eighty-eight when our niece was in Singing in the Rain. She had a part in that. We were all enthralled and amazed when the male lead began to sing the lead song, Singing in the Rain, and it actually rained on stage. We were captivated and Krista had us from that point on. Our daughter Amy at the time was eighth grade and she was a very good dancer. She saw her cousin Tracy in Singing in the Rain. She goes, "Mom, that might be something that I would like to do." She didn't go out for the fall production, but she did go out for the spring production because they were doing Chorus Line. And, "Mom, I can dance, so maybe I can get a part in Chorus Line." She was cast in the lead and she danced Cassie, and we all went back to high school with We became part of Krista's very large and very loyal parent, family, production assistants. It started with our daughter Amy and we are coming full circle because our granddaughter Gabrielle is a senior at Athens and is completing her fourth year as a member of ATC. So we've been here for a long time and we intend to stay for a long time. Once Krista gets her parents, she'll let the children graduate because she knows they'll come back, and they do, they all come back. Whenever she needs help, they miraculously appear and will do anything and everything that needs to be done because they were taught very, very well. I can't say enough about the person that Krista is. She has a level of dedication for her students that is rivaled by none. Her students mean everything. Her day starts and ends with her students and I was always very thrilled that our girls had a teacher that they could respect and who respected them and that they could rely on regardless of what the circumstances were. And I always knew that Krista would counsel them in the best possible way for them to make the best decisions for any situation that they might have been in. She was my eyes when I couldn't be there, my ears when I couldn't be there, but I always heard and saw after the fact. But she'd already taken care of it, so it was always wonderful. The students in the school love and respect Ms. Manfredi. They'll call her Manfred and there's not a student that doesn't know her. And this mutual respect that she has for the students and that the students have for her allow her to be and to have great impact with her peer mediation group. She's been doing peer mediation for fifteen years and the last ten, the first five she did by herself, and the last ten she will pick a group of students. And with the students, these student peer mediators, they help to resolve conflict in a positive way, not a negative way. It's like when you used to tell your kids, "Use your words and not your fists," or whatever. So she will, she has great success with her peer mediation. She's an amazing woman. ATC is a family. She's the mother. You've heard, they all call her Mom once they're gone. It's Ms. Manfredi in school, but when they're graduated and they become husbands because they're ATC members while they're in school and when they're out of school, there's a very elite group of husbands that are there for her with no questions asked. If you need me, I'm there. And I can say that I was thrilled when on March third, we gave a dinner recognition to her and over a hundred and fifty current students and alumni from all across the country came to pay, show their love and respect for her. She's an amazing woman and this honor is very, very, very... It's good, it's deserved, it's deserved. She's amazing.
Is there anybody else that wants to?
Thank you so much, Marty Mick and everybody who's here. I have been so fortunate that when I moved from Western Pennsylvania to Michigan, one of our friends lived over here in Somerset, and I was lucky enough to get a cab because we only had one car and go to the Troy School District and apply to a sub and to teach here. And I can say that I have been so blessed by being in Troy and the support from the Board of Education. I see some of them and my beloved Dr. Fowler back there and my assistant principal Betty Goss and friends that are here. I feel so blessed to have been able to be in Troy and build this program and work with the students and the people that I've worked with. I am truly blessed and I thank you. So what we're going to do now is I'm going to send, Mr. Frank Pitts is going to go over to the keyboard, and Ms. Gabrielle Mancella is going to come over here and she's going to, and Dane's going back to his place. She's going to sing a number from the show called Spanish Rose. And then we'll have a number that is called Kids, so we'll see that after this one. No, she doesn't need a mic. She won't.
For playback.
Oh, for playback? I'll point it this way, it'll pick her up. Test, 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 test. Yeah, it'll get it.
I'm just a Spanish tamale according to me, right off the bow of the tropics, far, far away, which is kind of funny since where I come from is Alton, PA. Spanish, okay, may I be Spanish? Just wait till I marry Alberto. I'll be the toast of Chichi Casnango, and all day long my casnets will click. I'll hide me by my bed and do the tango. I'll be so Spanish it will make you sick. I'll eat the tacos and the enchiladas. I'll drink tequila till I feel no pain. The only song I sing will be Granada. I'll be a respiro in Abbey Lane. Call me the wild Spanish rose, the craziest flower that grows. I'll kick off my heels and see how it feels to be a paltry Spanish rose. Ole! Behind my mantilla all goes, the beauty that nobody knows. So regal and cool, exciting and cruel, that's me, Spanish rose. Me rosita alberta. You buy my tortilla? You liking me, yes?
Yes.
No? Maybe? Yer. Americano, let me give you a bit of advice. To cross Spanish roads is in vice. You're mad you have found, so don't mess around where your heart is cold like ice. Albert, I will dance to the velero, fill chata in the nicest hunky toast. You'll wear your cutest mustache and sombrero, my handsome little boy from the Bronx. So now that you've met Spanish rose, you'll never forget Spanish rose. She'll taunt you, she'll tame you, but what I will thank you for worship, be Spanish rose. Not Danish. Not Danish, not British, not Swedish, not Jewish, but Sp-... Kids, I don't know what's wrong with these kids today. Kids, who can understand even the same? Kids, they're so ridiculous and so weird and charred. I don't see why anybody wants them. Just to wait and see. Kids, they're just impossible to teach. Soon you'll be old enough to hate. When you're all grown, you're a rock and roll. Another teenage lingo. Why can't we be like Hitler? Perfect in every way. What's the matter with kids? Kids, what the devil's wrong with these kids today? Kids, who can ask them to turn on the light? Why can't we be like Hitler? Perfect in every way. What's the matter with kids? What's the matter with kids? What's the matter with kids?
Thank you so much for allowing us and allowing us to perform.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. What a great tradition that we should start for every council meeting. We could put everybody in a good mood and carry that through the evening. Cindy, I'm going to assume we're going to table the other, or postpone? Let's take just a 2-minute recess while some of the audience leave, okay? We'll be back in 2 minutes. Okay, we are back in session. We could just get somebody to be a calming force in the hallway. Their energy is still out there. Our next order of business are public hearings. There are no carryover items, so we will go to public hearings. I will open the public hearing and invite staff to make a small, short presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Brent.
Couple of tough acts to follow.
I hear you.
I mean, a school group that raises $41,000 bucks in a week, show tunes, four standing ovations, and I'm here with a PowerPoint presentation, so apologies.
You will not get a standing ovation.
Mr. Mayor, we're here this evening for consideration of a zoning ordinance, text amendment in Zota 245 for what's known as sober living facilities. These facilities, and I'll get into exactly what they are in a couple of slides here, but they're presently not permitted in the city. This item was initiated by the Planning Commission. They made a determination that there was a need for these types of facilities. I'm going to get into need a little bit here. But during this process, the Planning Commission considered input from Great Lakes Recovery Community, which manages these sober living facilities throughout the area, as well as we had input from other sober living facility providers. And I should note that the Planning Commission actually visited a sober living facility in Shelby Township as part of their due diligence for information gathering. This is a provision from the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. It's probably the most important provision in the whole act. The act basically gives community the authority to zone. What this provision says is that a zoning ordinance shall provide for all types of land uses if there's a demonstrated need for the land use and appropriate location for the land use. So, what we try to do, the Planning Commission and Planning Department tries to do is if we know that we're going to be faced with an application for a type of use that doesn't, that's not permitted in the city, which this is not at this time, we try to be proactive and we try to define the use, determine appropriate locations for the use, and develop appropriate standards for the use so that we can consider it. If you don't take those steps and you're challenged, you're really on a defensive if it comes to any types of court action. That's not to say this is, there is any type of negative relationship with, or negative connotations with the sober living facility. It's just an approach we take based on this provision of the act. So, what is a sober living facility? We've got a relatively lengthy definition here. I'm not going to read the whole definition. I'm going to summarize some of the key points. It's a temporary residential living arrangement for seven or more adult persons receiving therapy and counseling from licensed or certified professional staff and trained non-professional or paraprofessional support staff. Residency is limited to a specific number of weeks or months, typically 24 months or less. It's equally as important, because this is something that not a lot of people are familiar with, to go over what these aren't. So, these are what a sober living facility is not. It's not a halfway house, a correctional facility, a homeless shelter, a boarding house, a daycare facility, a group home, medical clinic, medical marijuana dispensary, or methadone clinic. It's none of those things. I should note, as I indicated earlier, a sober living facility is defined as a facility with seven or more. If it's six or fewer, it's regulated the same as a single-family home. Basically, through case law, there's been a determination that a functional family, basically that lives under the same roof and lives together as a functional family unit, is equivalent to a domestic family provided there are six persons or fewer. This is similar to how we typically, how we now regulate foster care family homes and adult foster care small group homes and some other uses in the ordinance. So, sober living facilities, if permitted as written, will be permitted subject to special use approval in a number of zoning districts. Those are 1 and 2 family residential zoning districts, multiple and urban residential district, the IB Integrated Industrial and Business District, and the OM Office Mixed Use District. So, they'd be permitted only in these districts. And this is, these are similar districts to other uses such as adult foster care, group homes, and senior assisted independent living homes. I want to stress this is very important. Sober living facilities require special use approval in all cases. Very important. Why is this important? Special use approval is reviewed and considered and ultimately approved, if it meets all the conditions, by the Planning Commission following a public hearing. In all cases, there'll be a public hearing. All property owners within 300 feet will be notified by mail of the meeting. Notification will be published in a newspaper. There'll be a sign placed on a property to inform residents of the area of the upcoming application. And the application would have to meet all discretionary and nondiscretionary standards. These are the nondiscretionary standards. These are in the text amendment that's before you this evening. They've got to meet all these standards to be approved. I'll go over those very briefly. First of all, all residents have to be 18 years of age or older. The property must have frontage on either a major or minor arterial street. If they do not have frontage on a major or minor arterial street, the property cannot be used for this use. They've got to have appropriate licenses with the state of Michigan. And this is also important. For each resident that's living in the sober living facility, there must be at least 2,500 square feet of property area. The minimum size is seven residents, so if you don't have, if the property isn't at least 17,500 square feet in area, it's not considered. The larger the property, do the math, 2,500 per person, the bigger the parcel you need. That's another form of production. This is a map we came up with that shows properties that would technically be considered for sober living. The major and minor arterials are shown in red and the property that could potentially be used for sober living facilities is shown in green. We took out schools and publicly owned property. We did not take out churches. You'll notice White Chapel Cemetery is still on there. I'm guessing they're not in any hurry to develop a sober living facility in the future. There's apartment complexes, there's condominiums, churches, a number of uses in here that we just already draw the line. But, so, this is the kind of the worst-case scenario of property that could be considered for, worst-case scenario is kind of a negative connotation, but this is the big picture of what could, the property that could potentially be developed. In addition to the nondiscretionary standards, the Planning Commission would apply these discretionary standards. They include compatibility with adjacent uses, compatibility with the master plan. They consider traffic impact, impact on public services, impact on the overall environment. They'd also consider the nature and character of the activities on the site, vehicular circulation, parking, inside and outside activities, hours of operation, light, traffic, noise. These are the considerations. Pretty high standards to meet. These are put in place to protect, like any special use, to protect the budding properties from the use under consideration. So, this is the last slide in summary of what we've talked about this evening. The zoning ordinance does not currently have any standards or regulations related to sober living facilities. Locations are limited by zoning districts and discretionary and nondiscretionary standards. The use is similar to other uses that are permitted in the zoning ordinance and in all cases, they would require special use approval. And I would also, one other thing, Mr. Mayor, there was a yellow, some yellow sheets of paper. In preparation for the meeting today, the city attorney noticed something. She wanted to clarify this and I think it's a good suggestion. The definition for sober living facilities stipulates it's seven or more, but in the standard in section 6.33, it indicates that for sober living facilities that are serving six persons or less, they're treated like residential. Well, we've already defined them as being seven or more, so it's inconsistent. The standard was put there to clarify, but I think what it's actually done is confuse. So, we've cleaned it up. The language just before you was consistent with what was recommended for approval by Planning Commission. It just kind of wordsmiths it and tidies it up a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from council? Councilwoman McGinnis?
I have a question for you. And I'll preface this by saying that I actually prefer the language that we've used in here, but I noticed in comparison with some of the examples that you provided, specifically there was one from St. Paul, Minnesota, where they provided language in their definition that said sober houses do not provide onsite supportive services to residents, including the following. They listed several things there. Whereas the language that's been provided for us, the draft, says pretty much just the opposite. Sober living facility may provide limited supportive services to residents only, including, and then they list several of the same things. I personally prefer this, but I was wondering if you could explain perhaps why you decided to go with this as opposed to what is in some of the other examples?
As I indicated earlier, we worked on this language in cooperation with some other providers. They indicated that, basically what's really important here is this is the last step for someone, for someone who's facing challenges related to drug and alcohol addiction. This is the last step before they go back into society. They've gone through a lot of the heavy liftings such as, you know, the medication and the medical challenges and whatnot. They just need a little bit more structure in their lives, structured residential environment. It's still residential environment and they need support. And they get the support through the peer groups, through roommates, through people that have gone through the program, come back and volunteered to assist, as well as professional staff, psychologists and whatnot. And it was made clear to us that it was very important to provide that structure and these others, the support, the support structure helps to make for a successful transition from the sober living facility into society.
Councilman Teich?
You mentioned that seven or more fits under the criteria of sober living facility. Is there a limit? Can it be 12 people?
No limit.
There's no limit?
No limit.
Other than, I guess, the square footage?
Correct.
But if you had a big enough parcel, you could have a 25-person facility or, I mean, just assuming there'd be the parcel?
That's correct.
Yeah. And I guess, at this point, you know, I have some grave concerns about this, but another question I had was taking into consideration, is there a set number that it has to be 2,500 square feet? I mean, is that state law or is that something the Planning Commission has come up with? Does that make sense?
Yes, that's a number that we came up with that was used for some other similar-type facilities in the city. And we thought it was, as a comparable, it made sense to carry that same number over for this type of facility because it was similar.
Councilman Teich?
Maybe this is a better question for the city attorney, but I think initially you listed that it shall not be an effective ban on a type of facility and that was kind of the reasoning for doing this. If we said that you had to have 5,000 square feet per individual, that's not an effective ban, it's just trying to find a comparable lot or a comparable parcel. Is that correct?
Mayor?
City Attorney Bill.
Yeah, we would have to look and see how many parcels would qualify for that large of a facility in order to determine whether or not it's exclusionary zoning. So, I'm guessing that it probably would be okay. Again, you know, using something that is similar, certainly it's going to be more defensible if you are using the same standard for other things to defend against an exclusionary zoning. But certainly, you know, certainly that is something if council wanted to explore that further, certainly is within the power of council to do that.
We used, as a comparable, adult foster care, small group homes, which permitted by right if you're six or fewer, but if you're more than seven or more, special use in certain districts. And that was the standard that we used for those uses was one person, one resident per 2,500 square feet of property. It seemed to make sense because it was comparable.
Councilman Henderson?
Currently, do we have any sober living situations in the city of Troy?
There are none that I'm aware of.
Okay, and, okay, that answers my second question. And is there an impending need for making this change? Do we see some coming down the line? Is that promoted this?
Yes, that's correct. We were informed by other, by providers of this type of use that there's a need in Troy. There are similar-type facilities in surrounding areas, there's none in Troy, and there's a demand by residents in Troy for this type of facility.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
I know that you went out to see a location that's in Shelby and then obviously you looked at a lot of other locations. Is there a number that you could generally give us in terms of size of facilities? We know here that if it's six or less, we wouldn't be dealing with what you're presenting to us if it's seven or more, but based on the examples that you looked at, was there something that you typically saw? I'm assuming that a provider, perhaps the one that you were working with to come up with this language, could give you an idea of what typically is going to be a size for a facility that they think would be most a facility that they think would be most effective. I personally can't imagine that you'd have someone coming to you wanting to put something together with 20, 30, 40 people in it. It seems to kind of go against what they're trying to do in a facility like this, but I don't know if you could give us an idea of what some examples of sizes were?
I have been told that there are challenges with, you know, there's economies of scale, and the smaller you get, the more expensive it is on a per-resident basis, so they, based on the conversations I've had, sometimes you need more numbers to kind of make the numbers work. These are very expensive to live in. I mean, the one example I looked at was $850 a month for, I mean, for a bed in a bedroom. I don't know what the average number is, or what kind of the most popular number is. There was a representative here that could perhaps answer that. I don't know the answer to the question, unfortunately, sorry.
Okay.
More questions? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Barbara Reinhardt?
Thank you, Mayor Slater, to let me talk on this item. I think it goes right along with Michigan trying to be the beer capital of the world. If you look at that guy's map, he's got half of Troy scheduled to be sober living houses, which does not collect too many taxes in this city. And then he uses the word threat. Now, how many people do we got to have come into this city and use the word threat on us? And he's already talking about not seven people homes, large homes, okay? Now, is this city going to be a welfare city? I mean, we're already building tons and tons of low-income houses in this city, so we're not cheating the poor living in this city. What I'm talking about is that we don't have too many inspectors in this city to inspect the people that need to be inspected. Now, we're going to load our city up with sober living facilities that, as he says, covers medical people, all types of services, that all need to be inspected from time to time. Now, who's going to do that? That's the only thing I'm saying. I'm not against this stuff, but the object of it is, when is Troy going to bring something in that pays taxes instead of asking for no taxes? Just letting you know. My idea.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Yes, sir, come forward and give your name, please.
Hi.
Good evening.
Mayor, council, I'm Tom Tallett.
Could you use the microphone, please?
Sure. It's a little hard to get it up here.
I understand.
I thought I might sing my remarks since I got such a good reaction last time out of that. I've operated sober living facilities in the past. I'm currently operating one now in a neighboring community. I did, I'm coming into this process a little bit late. Had I realized what was transpiring earlier, I probably would have gotten involved with the planning commission a little bit earlier on this. I went to their last meeting, but it was, it had already come to a vote before I really realized what the wording was in this proposal. So, I have had a chance to look it over. I do have some concerns. My intent to be here today, as I said, I don't have a facility here in Troy now. My family's been in Troy since 1968, so I'm pretty familiar with the area, and it's definitely an area where I would consider putting a home. And my purpose today is really just to try to be helpful. I don't want to derail anything that's, or try to obstruct anything that's being done or has been done by the commission or anybody who might be applying for permits or anything like that, but only to offer some what I think might be helpful information, because I do have some experience with it. One of the things that I wanted to mention was, if you're looking for some guidance as far as some guidelines, there is an organization that formed a few years back, they're called the National Association of Recovery Residences. They do have a website, NAR Online, where they outline their recommendations. What they're trying to do is become established as a standard at the national and state level for different types of sober living facility. They actually, the new terminology that seems to be emerging out of that movement is recovery residences as opposed to sober living facilities. I did take the liberty of printing up the four different levels that they recognize as sober living facilities. As I'm looking at the language here that's being proposed, this appears to me to be what they would consider like a level for recovery residents. And my concern about that is that there are a lot of level one, two, and three recovery homes, too, which may or may not have more than six residents that would not fall under this language according to these standards. Now, these standards have not been adapted, adopt, is my time up?
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you'd like any more information, I'd be more than happy to provide it to anybody who's interested. And I do have these printouts if anybody.
Thank you. It looks like somebody else wants to speak. Mr. Breck, did you want to speak? Please come up and give us your name, please. We do have a three-minute time limit.
Three minutes, okay. My name is Paul Smith.
You can pin that down if you want.
Okay. And I do operate two sober living facilities, and the one in Shelby Township was the one that I operate currently. There are, the idea behind sober living is to fill in gaps that are missing within the levels of care and substance abuse treatment. There is the, there's a criteria for level of care for substance abuse treatment that's developed by the American Society of Addiction Medicine. That criteria is called the ASAM criteria, which is used in 30 states. And there are basically four levels of treatment. There is outpatient, there's intensive outpatient, then they call residential treatment, and then medically assisted detox or intensive inpatient. The patients that typically come out of intensive inpatient treatment will end up going back home, and we see this revolving door because their environments are still chaotic, there's still a lot to work, a lot, a work to do personally, they may not have the supports in place, so on. So, we are seeing some, this revolving door of treatment in the inpatient setting. It does cost per month, but we're able to make it work for one-tenth of the cost that it would take for somebody in medically insisted detox. For instance, if you were to go to, let's say, a Brighton hospital or a hospital that's similar to that, it would cost you anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 for the month. We're able to do that with a fraction of the cost, and able to keep them there for several months, which they do need, and provide the supports and the guidance and the living environment that they need. The idea is to create a, more of a natural setting for folks. So, in terms of the, you know, typically a sober living home can be, I mean, it ranges. It can be from seven, and there are some that, in some areas where they have a small motel complex that they use. In some states, some areas, there are probably over 500 in the state of Michigan sober living The state has some definition of it.
Thank you. Mayor?
Could I just ask, it's coming to our attention that that light fixture could fall at this any moment. Would you mind taking a recess?
Yeah, we'll be in recess until the light is fixed.
You want to speak on this item, sir? Please, if you could give us your name.
Yes, David Lord. Paul and I, Dr. Smith and I, worked extensively with the Planning Commission for a period of probably four months, maybe five months now. It was a considerably long period of time. And working with them to craft this language. I know they have done an outstanding job researching this independently and looking at that. So we're in full support of the language that's proposed in front of you now with regard to, from top to bottom, inclusive of the ratio, 2,500 square foot ratio. So if you have any questions in addition, both myself and Paul are available.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Shefty, did you come forward?
Counsel, I'd like to address on the subject. I had the opportunity to go out to the home of Shelby to talk to the residents, and they've been working with the Planning Commission. And personally, I've been very, very impressed by these people. I think there's a need out there. I think every family or extended family in Troy somehow has been touched by either prescription drug abuse, drug abuse, alcoholism. There's a lot of these terrible things out there that are going around, and people need, these people in these facilities are working, most of these people. It's my understanding by talking to the residents and the people that are, and the people that are running the facility, they do a good job, and it gives these people a chance to work their way back into society. And I think that there's a lot of places in Troy, especially areas that could be re-converted, some of this additional spaces that we have with office building or whatever, they're on the edge of residential areas. And also in residential neighborhoods, I think that these would be actually a benefit and a plus to Troy. So I, from the little bit of knowledge, do I have all the answers? No, I do not have the answers. But I was very impressed with Great Lakes and their facility, and I was also greatly impressed with their concern and talking to the people. So I wanted to put my five cents in. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and return it to the table for resolution.
Here.
Counselwoman McGinnis.
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Is there support to get in on the table for discussion?
Support for discussion.
Moved by Counselwoman McGinnis and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming to move the resolution as printed. The vote, Ms. Bittner? Do you want to have a discussion first? Okay. Counselwoman Teetz.
I think what's concerning about this issue is the lack of information that we have walking in today. I just saw the map a couple minutes ago, like I think the rest of the city has or many people have. I think if folks knew that this was a possibility, that one of these facilities was moving into their neighborhood, they'd have a lot stronger opinions. And I think some of the operators of some of these facilities had good points, but I think it needs to be explored further, and I think we're going too far, too fast. And before we vote on this, I think the citizens deserve to know what applicable properties there are. And, you know, yes, there will be notice if a facility wants to move into a parcel, but that notice will be assigned and notice to those folks who live within 300 feet. I think before, I think this is a classic example of measure twice and cut once. Well, I don't think we've measured twice. So I'm going to be voting no, and I encourage the rest of the council to join me.
Thank you. Counselman Henderson.
Yeah, I agree with that sentiment. And in fact, if we could get the gentleman's papers with the information, and maybe if he could submit them to the clerk, and we could have that bit of information as well. You know, I'd like more time and more information to deal with before I make a decision.
If there's a consensus to postpone the item, then we can send questions to staff to have those questions answered before we would have the item again come before council. So quite honestly, I think I'm in favor of postponing the item myself so that I can at least see some of the information that was brought forward tonight that was not in the And if there's any support, more support for that, I will move the resolution to postpone the item until, am I going to do the next meeting?
Next regularly scheduled.
The next regularly scheduled meeting?
Council.
I think that's May 13th.
Yes.
Move by the chair and supported by Counselman Henderson that we postpone the item until May 13th. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Counselmember Henderson?
Yes.
Counselmember McGinnis?
Yeah.
Counselmember Pennington?
Yes.
Counselmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes, motion passes to be postponed until the 13th of May. And if there are any questions for staff, please get those questions to staff. I wouldn't mind having that printout that was shown this evening myself.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business is public comment for items on the agenda. And my right-hand resident wishes to speak on O-01.
Thank you again, Mayor Slater, for letting me speak tonight. The only thing I'm talking about is 0-0-C, about 11:01 down. It's just a letter, commission is, but it does say that the company's going to have a permanent outdoor porta potty for the people to use. They're not going to have no indoor facility. They're going to have an outside porta potty for their employees. And it's over by the trailer park, and I guarantee you that if they can't find vote for Marty signs, they're not going to find that porta potty standing up too often because that's going to bring flies and all types of stuff in that area. So I don't know why Troy can't at least have standards of cleanliness, or at least for employees to use. It's right there in your backup letter. It's about 11:05, the draft. I'm just letting you know about, we're going back to outhouses, the city of the future.
Thank you. That's the only resident that has signed up to speak this evening. Our next item of business is response to public comment by staff or council. Seeing none, our next item of business are postponed items. There are none. So we will move to regular business. And our first order of business is I-1, mayoral appointments. So I will move the resolution to appoint Bruce Weldering to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the term that expires 4/30 of 2016.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, that we appoint Bruce Weldering to the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for the term that expires 4/30, 2016. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Counselmember Henderson?
Yes.
Counselmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Counselmember Pennington?
Yes.
Counselmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes for the remainder of the appointments. I will turn the floor over to Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Thank you, Mayor. First appointments, we have a couple of committees. Agenda item I-1B, appointments to the Charter Revision Committee, appointing Robert Burke and Shirley Canosa for term expiring, both terms expiring April 30, 2016. Also at this time to the Zoning Board of Appeals, appointment of Kenneth Courtney and David Eisenbacher for terms expiring April 30, 2016 as well.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Counselman Henderson that we appoint the persons nominated by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Counselmember, excuse me, Counselmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Counselmember Pennington?
Yes.
Counselmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Counselmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
In addition, Mayor, we have some nominations tonight for open positions. Agenda item I-2B, resolved, Troy City Council hereby forwards the following nominated persons to serve on the boards and committees as indicated to the next regular, regular city council meeting for action. First of all, we have the Charter Revision Committee. Unfortunately, we have a vacancy due to the death of a member, Mark Solomon. Nomination to replace him will be Frank Howelak for the term expiring April 30, 2014. Also, we have an opening on the Zoning Board of Appeals for an alternate to replace David Eisenbacher, who resigned to accept the full-time position there. Nomination there is for Edward Kempin for the term expiring January 31, 2015.
Support. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Counselman Henderson that place in the nomination, the names forwarded by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming. Discussion? I have a couple of questions. Are both of these gentlemen members of other boards or committees? And City Attorney Bloom, could you, could you explain if that's possible to have on two committees?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are certain boards and committees that you are limited to one board. One of those, I believe, is the Planning Commission, other than the ZBA rep. And I did not have a chance to talk to Mayor Pro Tem Fleming in advance of this meeting, but it may be that Mr. Howelak is precluded because, or I'm sorry, Mr. Kempin is precluded because of his service on the Planning Commission, and I'd like an opportunity to research that further.
We withdraw that appointment for Edward Kempin until we can research that. I know we have one person now, Mr. Crent, I believe, that's on that committee. And I know there's been some discussion at the Planning Commission about how many people they'd like to have on, but anyway, we can research that. So I withdraw that and leave the nomination for the Charter Revision Committee for Frank Howelak, the term expiring April 30, 2014.
Do we need support on the withdrawal?
It's fine. You can withdraw, that's fine.
Okay. Is Mr. Howelak on another committee? City Attorney Bloom?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yes, council, past councils have opined that they would like to keep one person per committee. However, legally required and recommended are two different things. So it's, he's not precluded based on the law from serving on two committees, but council may decide that they want to reinstitute that policy where they serve on one board.
Counselman Teetz.
Have we looked at every single person serving on a committee to ask them that question? I mean, honestly, I see a lot of names, and some names familiar that I've seen more than once. I don't know if we've followed that policy in the past. I mean, it's, it's not even a policy, it's a, an opinion. So I'm just wondering if there's ever been any research or anything like that, that that would come up, you know, for this nomination?
I can't speak in 100%, but it's been recommended that we try to involve as many residents as we can on committees, and I don't recall myself if there had been other dual appointments to council. It's certainly something that we could look at, but I've always wanted to try and get as many people involved as we could that want to volunteer. So I would be more in favor of putting somebody else on that is an interested applicant for a position. Is there further discussion?
I think we have had people serve on multiple committees in the past, my eight years here, and I haven't known it to be a problem. Even some of the interested applicants here, I think some of these committees already serving on other committees as well. So it's not been a practice that we've used to eliminate anyone that's been nominated by the council in the past that I'm aware of.
Okay. I will not vote no on the nomination, but I would like to, I'll look into that when it comes up for the appointment myself. Further discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Counselmember Pennington?
Yes.
Counselmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Counselmember Henderson?
Yes.
Counselmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next order of business is I-3, and there is a request for closed session. Somebody like to move that resolution?
Mayor?
Counselwoman McGinnis.
Be it resolved that Troy City Council shall meet in closed session as permitted by MCL 15.268 parent E, Nutson versus City of Troy et al., and MCL 15.268 parent C, Ask Me Map and TCSA.
Support. Moved by Counselwoman McGinnis and supported by Counselman Pennington that we meet in closed session. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Counselmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Counselmember Henderson?
Yes.
Counselmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Counselmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next order of business is the proposed agreement with ICE Lounge at 5903 John R. City Attorney Bloom, did you wish to give us overview on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is something that is a little bit unusual. We do have a proposed hook, it's a hookah lounge, it's called ICE Lounge, and it is actually taking over from the Coffinet, which was in the same shopping center. They have been granted a transfer from the state of Michigan, but they are now seeking a license from the city of Troy. And in reviewing the background of the brother of the applicant, there are some items in his criminal history which would prevent him from being a, from being a manager or an operator, and that would actually preclude the business. The sister has represented that he is not involved, that he is not going to be on the premises, and that, that she is the sole operator, and that he will not be on the premises. So this is an agreement that basically says that if he is on the premises, then, then the city of Troy would have the right to revoke that license immediately for the hookah lounge. It also incorporates many of the things which are proposed as an ordinance amendment, which you don't have in front of you tonight, but it is item 05, it's informational item, and we plan on bringing that back absent contrary direction. And I will just indicate that we did have the, both the brother and the sister, both of them signed it today. So if council is amenable to this agreement, there's a resolution authorizing and approving it.
Thank you. That was my question, is if it met with the new ordinance changes. So thank you.
It is.
More questions? Questions for the city attorney? Counselman Teetz?
My first.
Reading through the documentation and so forth, I think part of the issue was that the brother was the treasurer or secretary or president of the corporation, and the sister, pardon me, the brother also had the issues, legal issues that you discussed. And the sister says that the brother isn't a manager or corporation, but all the corporate documents show that he's a president, or, I mean, an officer of that corporation. And what this agreement says is, ignore those paperwork, trust us, the sister will run the business? Is that correct?
Some of that is correct. He, in the past, when it was Coffinet, he did sign some documents that were filed with the state of Michigan. However, the recent documents, I think afterwards that she modified the corporate structure and removed him as an officer. So he is not on the official corporate documents with the state of Michigan now, but he has been listed as a treasurer in the past. He did, for himself, he did indicate that he was the manager on the application. The sister says that he was not authorized to do that, so.
Counselman Teetz.
So, so they filed the application with the city, and when they filed the application, the brother that's had the issues, the legal issues, and that otherwise couldn't receive the license, filled in and said he'll be managing it. But the sister said, oh, no, that was a mistake, he didn't mean to fill that in, and therefore we're supposed to accept this agreement now? Is that, I mean, that's, that's the backstory, correct?
Yeah, the first, we noticed that he had not submitted an application with his name in it. It was the sister, first of all, and in noticing that, we made him actually file a second, you know, operator, so that he would be a manager. So we did notice that he had been involved in Coffinet. He was telling us that he was a manager, but the first official application was for the sister only.
Counselwoman McGinnis?
Well, I have to admit, because this came first on our agenda before the proposed language that will be coming up in a future agenda, that I was a little disappointed because I felt like we spent so much time on this one particular issue. And for me, I know that there are so many businesses that would love to have an opportunity to come into Troy. I don't want to discriminate in any way, but I was disappointed thinking that our staff and all of our resources had spent so much time on this one particular issue that really does have some questionable things right up after that. But looking further ahead to see that we're going to be receiving the proposed language that will apply to all of these businesses and any future businesses that come to Troy, I had a little bit of a sense of relief because I realized that you were really looking at big picture in terms of all of these types of businesses, and we've dealt with several of them lately, and I'm just kind of trying to figure out where they fit into the community. So I see that a lot of that was really carryover, and you've just put that into this agreement here. I do share some concerns that have been mentioned by Counselman Teetz. Just basically, we're getting something that has some red flags, and I understand that the sister has apparently gone out of her way to rectify the situation and put as many assurances in place as she can, that these will not, these red flags will not come to fruition. But I feel like I have to ask the question, at the time where we're already dealing with text resources from the police department, what's the plan here? Because this, this looks like it's going to take some micromanaging. If I would go along with an agreement like this, I unfortunately would want someone from the police department to tell me that this is going to be somewhat of a priority. And I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but I feel like we really have to take a strong position that if we would agree to have this agreement in place, that someone needs to be there checking in, and whose responsibility will that be?
City Attorney Bloom, did you want to? City Attorney Bloom, did you want to speak to that, or did we want to put the chief of police on the spot?
Well, yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, we don't do this in a vacuum, certainly the, you know, police department has been involved. And frankly, those red flags were the reason why we drafted this agreement, is that we felt like we needed to have something. If they were going to get a license, we were not comfortable without the ability to immediately revoke it. So, those red flags are the reason why we did propose the agreement. But I see that Chief Mayor is here, and I would certainly defer to him.
City Manager Kishnik, before, I want to go through you to bring the chief up.
That's fine, because I've sat in the meeting, and I know the more than just chief mayor was there addressing all these issues specifically and in a more, sorry, in a more general fashion. So, I think the chief can speak adequately to the issue and the enforcement and the aftermath.
And if I could, just before that, typically, when these type of paperwork is brought before us, it's to protect the city more than anything else, because if there's a lawsuit, there's probably a chance that they would get their license anyways. Is this a case of that, and we're doing this to protect the city more than anything?
Certainly, they had a license as Coffin Net, they're seeking to transfer that. The state of Michigan has already given them the go-ahead through the state. They have invested some resources in upgrading the space and in doing the renovations. So, yes, that's always the goal. However, if council decides that this is not in the best interest of the city, then that is fine as well, and, you know, we certainly have a defensible position.
Chief Mayor, welcome this evening.
Thank you. Mayor, council, I'll do my best to answer the questions. We've had the major issue with the hookah lounges that were going around in other locations in the city, which led us meeting with city management, city attorney's office, to start looking at, do we need to do some ordinance changes? So, we've been going in that direction already. With the case at hand tonight, the police department noticed renovations occurring up there, the licensing goes through the police department. We work closely with city management and the city attorney's office on these, we noticed some irregularities. We crafted the agreement that we have here, knowing that we are working towards a ordinance, and keeping some of those factors in mind, and at the same time, looking at the case at hand. Your observation on the eventual movement of the Coffin Net to this other location was in discussions. So, we crafted this agreement that we felt best looked out for the city's interests, looked out for their interests, and eventual moving from one location within the same plaza to another location. And it was based on our professional belief that this was the best course to go. So, the police department was very comfortable with the agreement crafted by the city attorney's office, and we were deeply involved in that during the course of their drafting of that. Regarding the, may I address, Counselman? Regarding the issue of resources, it is a good observation, our resources are stretched. This is the type of location, along with liquor establishments, that we'd like our police officers to go into on a regular basis, so they can keep track, watch for licensing issues, make sure we know what's going on in these locations, and cut off problems before they get out of control. So, what we've done is the same thing with hookah establishments that we do with liquor establishments, and put them on a regular inspection rotation. With this issue at hand here, we've got enough agreements in there that we can inspect, ask for identification, and I'm very confident we'll be able to manage this issue up there. And if not, we'll tighten up for the next one. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes.
Counselman Pennington?
So, Chief, I would ask you, if you, you're taking the brother out of the situation, this establishment, has there been any problems that have been out of the norm?
They're not open yet, they've got the facility ready to open. The Coffin Net is the location where we are, which is quite a bit smaller, and it was more set up as like a computer internet cafe. So, they took the smoking license from that, and they're transferring it to this new place. So, it's not a good comparison, because it's, this is going to be more like some of the other ones we have, unfortunately, some of the other ones we've had, we've had a couple issues, but we're hoping to be on top of this ahead of time.
So, the Coffin Net was not a hookah lounge, it's just now they're going to convert it?
It had the smoking, and correct me if I misspeak in any of this, Lord, it had the smoking permit, and then they extended to the hookah lounge, which falls under our ordinance. It was a lot smaller facility, so it wasn't a hookah lounge as we think of some of the other ones that we have.
Okay.
I hope that answers the question.
Counselman Henderson?
I read the agreement, and then I saw that we were looking to make an ordinance change. And I guess the question I have is, is the cart before the horse? Should we not opt to solidify the ordinance change first and then consider this? Is that sequentially a better way, or no?
City Attorney Bloom?
Mayor, certainly with an ordinance amendment, you can impose additional restrictions. What we did was incorporated the language that is currently proposed. Obviously, you may have other changes to it, but the language that is currently proposed to amend it dealt with parking issues, dealt with the hours of operation, and dealt with, you know, no one under 18 is allowed in, some of the problems that we're having, and certainly no alcohol is allowed either. So, that, this agreement does incorporate all of those things which are proposed for the ordinance amendment.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes, Chief, I appreciate your report there, and I think we've all read the police reports, we know how much, how many problems we're having at other lounges. I read this entire agreement as well, and I think if we have this agreement in place, even with the other lounges, it will prevent some of the issues we've been having. So, I look forward to that ordinance amendment. In this particular one here, the money's been spent, they have a license from the state. I don't like the hookah lounges, I wish we could eliminate them all, but I don't think we practically can. What we can do is regulate them to the maximum extent possible. So, I think this is what we're doing in this agreement that you have signed with the sister and the brother, you're incorporating all those things. So, I think if, we could delay it, but I think eventually they'll come back and get agreement, the state will have to. But I believe what you've done thus far in the agreement you crafted, and they signed today, you've really tied their hands, and if they make a mistake, we become aware of it, they'll be out of business. So, I think you've gone through all this work, we should give them the opportunity, I don't like them, but I give them the opportunity, and then take what we've learned in preparing this agreement, put in the new ordinance to apply to all the other hookah lounges in town.
That's my sentiment, the same, Mayor Pro Tem Fleming. If somebody would move the resolution, get it on the table, we can further discuss it if we wish.
Mayor, I'm moving the resolution as printed.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and supported by Counselman Pennington that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Next item is the consent agenda. Is there anyone on council that wishes to pull a consent agenda item? Would somebody like to move the resolution?
Mayor?
Counselwoman McGinnis?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
My support.
Moved by Counselwoman McGinnis and supported by Counselman Henderson that we approve the consent agenda items as printed. Discussion. Counselman Henderson?
I was reminded, I sent an email to Mr. Kishnik earlier on all these items, because they have placed in the consent agenda now, an item where they've placed items out to bid, and they've listed all the Troy businesses, and, you know, who's gotten notification, how many have responded to it. And I just, kudos to the city team for at least giving us that bit of information, so that we can know where we're at. So, I appreciate that.
I will pass it along.
Thank you. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes, motion passes. Next item for business is memorandums and future council agenda items, there are none on the agenda. Takes us to public comment for items not on the agenda. I failed to read the disclaimer before the last public comment, so for those citizens that plan to speak at public comments section this evening, please review the rules and regulations portion of the agenda, as we will strictly enforce those rules. First on, first speaker is Mark Reinhardt, resident of Troy. Good evening.
Mayor Slater, I should come at 7:30, 25 instead of 7:10. I gave you packages today, and I'm going to agree with Gene Stein, and also, I'm sure, Mayor Slater, to support our youth group, Troy Youth Assistance Group. They're selling tickets that cost $25 apiece, and whether I agree with the council what they do or not, I'm a Troyite, and we should support them. The phone number is 1-248-823-5095, and you got to buy them by March 25th, please. Also, the second page, last week, somebody was talking about the divisive people inside this city. Well, if you turn over the page, there's a Troy Michigan blog, and it says the Troy Council is an embarrassment to the public, and the Troy Times is a rag, okay? And the guy says right on the beginning of his blog, he does a name call, but right down the bottom, he mentions terrorism inside Troy. You look at the next page, should Troy succeed? Okay, then he also, you look down there, in Facebook, there's something called Likes, and that means somebody's seen your page, and there's something down on the bottom of the page is F, which is a Facebook share that goes onto the internet, which stays forever, okay? This page brags over 500 shares on Facebook page, and 5,000 hits on his page for Like. So, that's how many people saw him talk about Troy, okay? The next page is a newsletter out of Pakistan, and if you see the under name, that's how I get the people into my Rolodex and onto my computer to track the people. The next page is part of this guy's blog again, where he's talking about 50% of Troy outs are whacko. Now, how in the world can you ever close the divide between people when you have people on the internet calling people like myself, wearing tin caps, called the, I'm mental and I shouldn't move out of Troy, and as the mayor found out, I'm the wrong person to be stepping on like that, because I got nothing to do but follow up who's saying it. Okay, the next page is another thing bag, talking about the Republican Party. Troy is a nonpartisan city, and anytime in Facebook or the blogs, they talk about Republican or Democrat, this is a nonpartisan city, get that out of our city, we don't need that. And then the next page is when Automation Alley last Sunday collected $750,000 inside that area. Then you look at the next page, city manager, how many Troy, how many Troy businesses got part of that $750,000? And that facility sits inside Troy, not too many. And then the next page is another article, Cooks and Liar, with Troy, Michigan right at the top of it, okay? Then also, if you look to the side, it says, I'm sorry, but there's 53 comments, and I follow every one of those people who made comments about the city of Troy.
Our next speaker is Kathy Fushenary, Troy resident.
As you all know, I've been a resident of Troy for a long time, 36 years. Last fall, I spoke to you about my experience living in Troy, and how my husband and I realized the bargain it was to live here. We're happy to pay our taxes for the wealth of services and benefits we receive. We raised our family, working together with a diverse population, creating opportunities for all of our children. I talked about the synergy at work in this community that had greater benefit than any of us could have generated alone. The synergy is what makes Troy a great place to live. I talked about how the atmosphere changed, it turned divisive, mistrustful, allowed bigotry to flourish, and encouraged fearing of others of a different background or lifestyle. I asked council to be mindful of the decisions they would make moving forward. And seeking a new mayor, we would look for, we would need to look for candidates who represented more than ideology, people not so entrenched in ideology that they wouldn't see the people standing before them. The candidates would need to be able to listen to other points of view, be willing to represent all the people in the community, and not just those who agreed and supported their personal agendas. We needed someone willing to work with the city staff and volunteers we had, not drive people out to replace them with cronies. We need character, we need integrity, and we need honesty. Council found those characteristics in Mayor Slater, and he has indeed returned responsible government to Troy. Nearly four years ago, I supported Daines Slater in his candidacy for city council. I recognized his impeccable character. His approach to the city's business and this council has reflected the traits I asked you to consider critical a year or six months ago. He's returned civility to this chamber, he continues to demonstrate that he deserves the trust I placed in him. Now, I urge our citizens to make that same mindful choice. Let's return this community to the jewel it was, with the respect of the citizens, the region, and the nation returned to its former levels. Mayor Slater's proven himself to be a good man, capable of providing the leadership we need. As a community, we need to keep Daines Slater. Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Kulis, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to address a power that this council possesses by virtue of the city charter. Under section 4.8 of the charter, this council, or any person or committee authorized by it, has the authority to inquire into the conduct of any department, office, or officer, and to make investigations as to matters in which the municipality has an interest. I formally request this council investigate the actions of Mr. Gordon Shepke, member of the Planning Commission, whose term ends in 2014. Last week, Trust received information that Mr. Shepke was observed pulling up Keep Mayor Slater signs at a property located at Big Beaver, east of Livinoy. Mr. Shepke was seen pulling signs out of the ground and throwing them down to ensure that people passing could not see the signs. Mr. Shepke was removing legally placed signs as they were on this property with the permission of the landowner, who personally placed the signs on his property. When Mr. Shepke was confronted and informed that he had no permission to remove the signs, he claimed that he was instructed to remove those signs by Marty Nolenberg. I believe that it is completely appropriate for this council to investigate Mr. Shepke under section 4.8 of the city charter for several reasons. First, it is the duty of this council to maintain the city planning commission and oversee its function. If a member of the planning commission is actively undermining members of this council, then questions arise about his fitness to hold office. Second, in taking a position on the planning commission, Mr. Shepke was required to take an oath of office and swear to uphold the city charter. As part of his oath of office, Mr. Shepke is required to follow Troy's code of ethics, which demands that he use independent judgment when making his decisions, and not to succumb to the influence of others. By stating that he removed the signs at the behest of Marty Nolenberg, Mr. Shepke shows that his judgment has been impaired by his political beliefs, and he no longer is acting in the best interests of this city. Finally, tampering with law and signs is a misdemeanor, which can include up to 90 days in jail, as well as a fine. If Mr. Shepke has broken the law, there must be a finding of fact to determine if this constitutes misconduct in office and warrants his removal. So, this council must perform its duty and follow section 6.4 of the city charter. This council must give notice, hold a hearing, and determine if Mr. Shepke is fit to hold office. Because of his actions, if true, undermine not only this council, but the heart of the political process. The voters of this city need to know if Mr. Shepke is worthy of the responsibility of holding office in this city. Thank you.
Gordon Shepke, Troy resident, is the next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening. While that was a surprise, I didn't realize I was a criminal. There's a reason for everything, it doesn't always like it shows on the service, but, you know, council, that's up to you. But I believe, I came up here to say... But I, I believe, I came up here to say, tonight, to say a few things here. I think any candidate running for an elected office in Troy should be trustworthy, should be of high moral character and should have integrity. They should not be an individual who will try to substitute their values or lack thereof for the taxpayers' values. Saying that, I'm very confused because I attended the mayoral debate last Thursday night and Mayor Slater, you made, you made some statements that bothered me. And one of them is on the Transit Center not costing the taxpayers not even a single dollar. You said that, another statement you made, you said that you were nonpartisan. And you were taking credit for John Zerleg's three-year budget plan and that's his plan, that's not yours. Remember, it was Plan A or Plan, Plan B. The interim city manager, after the Transit Center started, stated that the cost to the taxpayers of non-reimbursable funds would be just short of somewhere around $400,000. So that confuses me if it's not going to cost us anything. I'm also confused, well, first of all, I'm grateful for Wade Fleming because if he hadn't have cut the price of the Transit Center down by a couple of million dollars, that, that added $350,000 overpriced crash wall, the city of Troy would be stuck for it. I think our mayor, Mr. Slater, you've been one of the most partisan city officials in the 43 years that I've been attending and lived in Troy. You've been very, a very partisan official, in fact, one of, one of the most. So, you know, I, when you're saying you're nonpartisan, I really don't believe it. I cannot vote for you for the potential conflict of interest that might exist when you yourself are allegedly receiving a police pension of 100, around 120,000 a year from the city, while the mayor reviews and approves city pension liabilities and union contracts, which are funded many times higher than the private sector. Wise men, and I look up to Dr. Phil on, on the TV, says, "The best indication of, of future performance is past performance." And I have many complaints on yours, denying First Amendment rights to the public at council. Back in July of 2011, you expressed that your opinion that taxpayers' concerns are crap. And I disagree with that. I took offense to that. Anyway, there's a lot of things going on at Troy that the taxpayers don't know about and...
Shepke, thank you.
Is that it? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Breck, resident of Troy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Slater, your campaign has been stuffing my mailbox with its misguided reasons why I should vote for you for Troy mayor. I want now to list some reasons why no Troy taxpayer should ever vote for you. In November 2009, your first month in office, you voted for a property tax increase that you told us Troy had to have or there would be all sorts of disasters and our city would be broke. Troy voters in February 2010 turned down that tax increase by a two-to-one margin. You and your supporters on council retaliated in May 2010 by voting to close Troy's library, nature center, historic park, Troy Days, and the community center. You did this claiming that the city would be out of money in the 2011, 2012 budget year. It turned out you hadn't even done your homework. Shortly after, it was pointed out that the community center was virtually self-supporting. There was no money to be saved by closing it. Had you even bothered to read your own budget? Cost savings had never been your goal. It was about blackmailing the public into thinking they had no choice but to increase taxes and out and out lie, as we shall see in a moment. In November 2010, voters again rejected tense tax increase demands at the polls. And you sued Ed Kempin rather than put his save the library with no tax increase proposal to a vote of the people as our city charter requires. And you told the court in that case that our city could not afford the expensive $90,000 special election required by that proposal. The judge, of course, gave you that one. And then what next? You and your colleagues scheduled that expensive special election that our city couldn't afford, but for August. And by July, just before that election, you insisted that the library really would close in five days if a new millage wasn't passed. Why? Because you alleged there just was no money. Voters, of course, submitted to your extortion and you got your $3 million per year tax increase in August. What happened? We found out at year end that there was a $6 million surplus. Perhaps it was that you were more worried about your own $120,000 per year pension and lifetime family healthcare benefits than you were our city's services. Oh, if only Troy's property taxpayers could look forward to anything half so generous. Recent research now tells us that in addition, you also own a mansion on a golf course in Harbor Springs, where most Troy taxpayers can't, and especially pensioners can't, even afford to buy lunch. Where do you live? Troy or Harbor Springs?
Our next speaker is Nicholas Sherracel, Troy resident.
Good evening. Let me see if I can get this down here where I can speak. Good evening, council members. Mr. Slater, your record of accomplishments on this council are infamous. You supported the people then on the council who tried to prevent Hooters from moving to Rochester Road, leading to an out-of-court settlement. You have supported the DDA and its spending, leading to a possible bond default in the not-too-distant future. Starting this year and continuing through 2017, bonds will begin to come due on money spent by the DDA for a total of $14 million. They don't have the money to pay this back. How much will the city have to pay? You supported the library tax under threat of closure. Even though the millage was passed, you then supported to close it on Saturday, its busiest day. You supported the Transit Center and helped to resurrect it after it was initially defeated. The first cost overrun for the crash wall of more than $350,000, and again, I'll repeat what I said last time I was here, is heavily inflated, is now on record. This brings it to a total of almost $7 million. If the appellate court does not rule in favor of the city in the dispute over land ownership, it will definitely cost the city a great deal more for the land. All of this is for less than two dozen writers a day. You supported our incompetent city attorney when she decided to go against the state law and did not want to have a new election for the position you currently occupy. Last, I see the police department is investigating a church on the west side for investment. I hope they've improved their investigation capabilities. Since 2009, they've been incapable of discovering who was involved in the disappearance of $40,000 from their safe. Thank you, Mr. Slater. We just love your accomplishments. Hopefully, this is your last meeting.
Our next speaker is Jim Warpatinsky, Troy resident.
Good evening, mayor, council.
Good evening.
City staff, residents, I just wanted to mention something from last week. When I was here and told the story about how the city attorney had given the council the right advice on that Hooters thing, and I said the council made the wrong decision, that was right. But what I didn't tell people, everybody doesn't know, that was four or five years ago. So it wasn't this sitting council that made the bad decision. So I just want everybody to know that, that it was one of those previous dysfunctional councils that did it. Another thing I want to mention is although my four daughters all went to Troy High, I have a soft spot in my heart for that school. But after seeing these Athens folks here tonight, I just got to say, wow. I'll have to put Athens right up there, kind of close to Troy. You wouldn't mind, would you, Councilman McGinnis, since you're also a Troy High grad? But, and then just finally, you know, I sit here or stand here or whatever and hear people talk and I say, you know, just things run through my mind, like, you know, beauty is in the eyes of the beholder. What planet do people live on? Do they really see and hear the same things I do and what have you? And apparently not. So I was at this candidate's forum on Thursday night and I was quite frankly, quite impressed with your answers, Mayor Slater. I, I go to those things all the time and I'm used to the political answers where the answers really don't, the questions will get answered. The politicians just dance around them. And you were quite frank and open and everything. I loved it. So why these other people have a beef is beyond me. And so, thanks. You all are doing a great job. You're golden. You're golden, attorney, city staff. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Crent, Troy resident.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Good evening.
I attended that League of Women Voters Forum for the Troy mayoral candidates held on CMN, at the CMN Television Studio last Thursday also. I found the candidates' answers to be very telling regarding both their character and their positions on issues. I recommend that every Troy voter watch CMN cable television to see this forum. I think it's very, very informative. Here's just a sample of what you'll hear. League of Women Voter Moderator Karen Fabian recited this question submitted from a member in the audience. "What is your position on the Transit Center?" Marty Nolan replied, "Transit Center is a done deal. The voters have spoken." "I just drove by the other day. The footings are in place. They're 30 feet high. We've got to live with that." Dane Slater replied, "I was obviously part of putting together a plan to make sure that the Transit Center moved forward. When the Transit Center was killed by four members of council, I partnered with Mayor Pro Tem Fleming and met with the business community, our planning department, city administration, and put together a compromise that we all could live with and move forward and make sure that the Transit Center was viable and going to move forward." It's obvious to me that Marty Nolenberg has a negative reflection, reflects negatively about our Transit Center and Dane Slater's for it. Dane obviously understands the importance of creating jobs in Troy and providing a transportation hub that will serve our college students, business people, vacationers, and shoppers from across Michigan and beyond. It will, it will continue to reinforce Troy as a destination city. I like the straight answers Dane Slater gave at that forum. And one of the side comments I heard after the meeting was a comment made by Marty Nolenberg. And I believe someone's going to address that tonight. But I just want to say, I like straight answers. I didn't hear a lot of those from Marty Nolenberg that night. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Toby Goslin, Troy resident.
Good evening. You're smiling. I always address you, "Good evening, council and city management and staff. Thank you for all you do every day. You represent our city in positive ways. You're united with pride and community spirit. And I see positive change, growth, and optimism in every one of you. I speak to those watching from home tonight with an urgent reminder. Voters have a critically important responsibility as they shall select our mayor on Tuesday, May 7, 2013. Mayor Slater, you've unified our council and the city with your collaborative leadership and calm. Together, we have a vested interest in our community. You continue to provide a wealth of knowledge and proven experience. Public safety is the number one concern of residents. Sadly, we are witnessing the breaking news of the Boston Marathon bombing today. Your expertise as a retired captain of the Troy Police Department brings peace of mind to the voters of Troy. A career politician brings nothing to Troy other than mindless rhetoric and empty promises. I'm a nonpartisan, law-abiding citizen and a trusted resource to those who know me. I set the bar high and surround myself with honorable, like-minded people. I look forward to electing Mayor Dane Slater on May 7. Mayor Slater continues to serve the community with a proven record of nonpartisan leadership experience, bringing pride and respect back to our wonderful city. It's important to note that Troy's image goes beyond our regional boundaries. Mayor Slater, you are the clear choice for mayor. You've earned my trust and my vote. You're doing a great job. And I'm hopeful voters agree by electing you as mayor of Troy on May 7. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Tillman, Troy resident.
Thank you, mayor and council members.
One minute, please. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I want to first say that I'm sorry to hear the gross misrepresentation, exaggerations, and outright lies that have been directed toward you, Mayor Slater, by some of the participants tonight. What I'm going to say is not a lie, is not a misrepresentation, but the truth. I also attended the meeting Thursday night where the five candidates were televised on the forum. And after the meeting was over, one of the questions that I would have asked, that didn't get asked, was asking the mayoral candidates if they would continue their full term in office if they were elected. I asked that of Marty Nolenberg. Mr. Nolenberg's first words when I asked, "Would you complete the full term as mayor?" He said, quote, "I cannot predict the future," unquote. I said, "Well, it's a little more than trying to predict the future. I think you owe it to the people of Troy to tell them whether or not you would complete the full mayorship if you were elected." And he said, "Well, Mr. Slater was not going to run for mayor," and he changed his mind. I said, "I don't understand what that's got to do with the question that I asked you. In fact, I consider that a good thing that Mr. Slater did." I said, "I'm wondering whether you would run for another office in November of 2014 if you were elected." He said, "I will do what's best for me and the city. I cannot answer that question at this time." My question to Mr. Nolenberg again was, "Will you complete the full mayorship if you were elected?" He said, "I cannot predict the future." As a resident of Troy, I want someone who's going to complete the full term as mayor. Obviously, Mr. Nolenberg is not willing to commit to doing that. Thank you, Mr. Slater, for the nonpartisan, great job you have done so far.
Our next speaker is Bruce Bloomingdale, Troy resident. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, it's an interesting evening. And I'm just absolutely impressed with the ability of people to stand at this podium, quote, "Facts and figures." Recall every, reminds me of my wife. She can remind everything I've done wrong from in the 50 years we've been married. That's amazing. But it's also the element in this town, this driving divisiveness that we exist with. And I'm too going to speak to the people that may be happening to watch this city council meeting. You can certainly tell that there's an election because we've got all, everybody up, taking their positions, and there's no compromise, not even a little bit, except on this city council. And I admire you guys and, young lady, for the ability to ignore that kind of rhetoric that comes from this podium and make good decisions. I think that you've, I haven't agreed with every decision that's been made in the last year or so. But I'm impressed with the fact that I see people addressing the business of this city. And therefore, and also the city employees. I find it unconscionable that people feel free to stand at this podium and call our employees names. Now, I don't know what kind of work environment these guys... names. Now, I don't know what kind of work environment these guys worked in. I'd like to ask a question. Did your boss treat you that way? Do you think that's appropriate? I always taught, was taught, that you criticize in private and praise in public. And I said it at the last meeting, and I'll say it again. If any citizen in this town has a problem with a public employee, one of our, one of our employees, any of them, if they want to do it right, submit it in writing with the facts and figures to support your concern. Let that person's supervisor review it, and then go through that process. It's the only legitimate way to do these things. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Our next speaker is Ellen Hutterick, Troy resident.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This has been a tough day for many people. I think a lot, a lot of things are on all our minds, and I want to express appreciation that, for how the council meeting began and celebrating, hey, I'm a Colt, but go Redhawks. That was awesome tonight. And it's just a reminder today that life is very short. I've had a lot of that lately. I have in-laws that were very ill this winter, and a father-in-law that is now on his own. I just lost my mother-in-law. And being with him and in the nursing home, and being with a gentleman last week at the League of Women Voters event, a gentleman that served in World War II in MacArthur's office, because his brother had been killed. He said he was the lucky one. I'm just reminded that we all just need to take a deep breath. We need to function from facts. I'm astounded at how many people are spewing opinion, 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 and none of them watched the study sessions you guys logged through this winter that were so, so instructive. If you did, three of the speakers tonight, what they said, most of what they said would be negated by just that benchmark of knowledge of what you all are facing. Knowledge is extremely important. Understanding the history, appreciating that our economy tanked and our property values tanked here. This isn't a misrun city. This is an excellent city that we need to protect from that economic downturn and ride out of. I really think that Mayor Slater is the right man to carry us forward. I don't see this as a time to switch that seat and go through another learning curve. We see the problem when we're on one. Former Mayor Doyle recently wrote an opinion piece that was in the Oakland Press where he talked about the values of local officials. If you all didn't see it, and I should send the link, I've had not enough time to do that, to you. It's so valuable, and it's the importance of being independent and setting partisanship aside. I heard criticisms tonight that just are so unfounded and almost gleefully done. And I'm hoping we can move past this. On May 7, let's vote to keep this team in place. It's a well-oiled machine. It's well-informed. It's been working with city staff, and I value it tremendously. Our communities need this. We need the security of it. We need to move forward in a positive way. And please, anyone who hasn't watched those study sessions, if you're spewing information on social media or at this microphone, I plead for you to please watch them and get yourself grounded in the facts. We owe it to one another. This is how we serve one another in our community. Republican, Democrat, Colt, Redhawk. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes the list of residents that have signed up to speak. Our next order of business is council referrals. There are none tonight, so we move to council comments. Are there any comments from council this evening? Councilman Teetz?
Regarding the proposed agreement with ICE Lounge, I really should have voted no. So I was hoping that I could call for reconsideration, even though it won't, I don't think it'll change anyone else's opinion, but just for the sake of my conscience tonight. So I would need a second. Is that correct?
Second, and then it would have to be a majority.
Do we have to change the rules?
You would. You'd have to suspend the rules first, then vote to reconsider, then bring the item back and re-vote on it.
Okay. You may.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to reconsider I-4, the ICE Lounge issue.
Moved by Councilman Teetz and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we suspend the rules. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Henderson.
Yeah, I'm kind of in that same ballpark. You know, I would prefer to have the ordinance amended first, and then, you know, let's discuss how these folks are. I'm pro-business, for sure. But in light of, you know, the problems we've had with hookah lounges in the recent past, it does not settle real well with me.
Further discussion? I personally think that they've covered those concerns in the agreement, so I'm okay with it. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember Henderson?
We're voting on suspending the rules.
Suspending the rules, yes.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilman Teetz?
Yes, I'd like to reconsider I-4, proposed agreement with ICE Lounge, please.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Moved by Councilman Teetz and supported by Councilman Henderson that we revisit I-4. Discussion. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
Nope. I want to reconsider, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, what?
He voted no by accident. He meant to say.
Yes to reconsider.
Yes to reconsider. My apologies.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. It's just stupid rules, you know. Okay, Councilman Teetz?
Yes, I'd like to call the question on this.
You would move, you would move it again.
Okay, move proposed agreement with ICE Lounge.
Moved by Councilman Teetz and supported by Councilwoman McGinnis that we redo I-4.
I-4.
Discussion. Councilman Anderson.
In light of the ordinance proposal that we've seen, when is that to come in front of us?
May 13, I believe, is the schedule for that. If it's, if it's in the items, the report items, generally it comes at the next council meeting. Any other discussion?
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming? Just to clarify here where we are. So if we're agreeing with Councilman Teetz that we want to reconsider this, we would vote no this time?
If you want to change I-4, we are now voting on I-4.
Right, again.
As it was printed, again.
Right.
So if you're not in favor of I-4, you would vote no.
Right.
Is everybody clear? Okay. I just want to make sure before we vote.
If you want.
So this is, this is, this is as if we went back to the beginning, and you were just voting on I-4 from the beginning.
So Councilman Teetz can sleep tonight without his baby waking him up. The vote, Ms. Bittner?
On I-4?
On I-4.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Councilmember Teetz?
No.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
In solidarity, no.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
It's a tie, so it fails.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
So the, the I-4 fails?
It fails, right.
Okay. Are we okay with that, City Attorney Bloom?
Yeah, at this point, certainly we have our direction.
Between now and the 13th, is there a possibility that this will open without the agreement?
No, they, without the agreement, they will not have a transfer of their license.
Okay. Any further council comments? Councilman Teetz?
Thank you very much for indulging me and so forth. And that is all. Thank you. And I apologize for being a little scatterbrained. I'll do a better job next time. Thanks.
We're going to blame it on that?
Baby.
Little, little three, how, two months? Six weeks?
One month and a couple days.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Well, something was, I guess, brought to our attention during public comment for items not on the agenda. And I guess it pertains to someone on the Planning Commission who's conveniently here in the audience. So I don't know if this is the time for anyone else to put in their two cents. Obviously, as someone that put forth the code of ethics for our committee members, our appointees, our board members, and this being brought to our attention here at the meeting, it's concerning. I think we probably would have to do a little bit more investigation just to figure out what's going on and figure out what some of the terms of the comments that were made are and what our options are because this isn't something that's been presented to us before. But obviously, it's something that I would like to look into before we have our next meeting. And I don't know if any other council members would like to add anything to that at this point or just wait to see what happens from here. I think it needs to be addressed because it was brought up tonight at the meeting, but.
Well, I think I will abstain from that discussion, seeing as it involved me. I don't know if a police report was made on that issue or not. Maybe that's something that we could look at first and see if that happened. And then we'll move forward from there. Councilman Henderson?
That was my line of thinking as well. Was there a police report? Is there any action that's been taken? Hearsay is not necessarily something I'd like to proceed in, in this case.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming?
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Henderson here, too. And having run a couple of campaigns in Troy, I can't keep count of the number of signs that I had missing. I don't know. I never caught anyone taking signs, but I certainly lost quite a few, and I think it happens. But I don't think we have enough information tonight to make any decisions.
Councilman Teetz?
You know, this is a last-minute sort of campaign hijinks that I just, it frustrates me to no end. We talk a good game about, oh, we're keeping politics out of, out of city council, but yet we have a whole lineup of people that want to talk about nothing but politics. At this point, I think it's maybe a political tactic or whatever. I don't care. But I think what's frustrating is there are no facts brought up. There are no, it was hearsay. Somebody said this. I thought I saw somebody say that. And that's disappointing. And it was done for no other reason than it's that time of year. And if you think that that's the way to run elections, that's the way to behave, that's just really disappointing that you're going to use the council time. I mean, we're here to represent the citizens. And I know none of us said that up at this podium. But in the same way, it frustrates me quite a bit because when I ran for office, I didn't do the whole, come up and talk to the podium and pontificate, nor did I ask people to do it for me. And I think that we should ask and encourage those people to realize that the city council meeting is not a time for politics. It's not a time to come up and give me who you are going to be voting for, who aren't going to be voting for, for three and a half minutes or three minutes. It's time for doing business that's related to the city agenda. And whether you want to spend the rest of your time and money and resources and everything else involved in who gets elected mayor, city council, or dog catcher, that's up to you. But please tooth the courtesy to your fellow citizens and to the taxpayer of simply addressing the issues. So until, until there's some sort of realistic thing that's brought to the table or whatever, I don't think we have anything to talk about, other than an allegation that was brought up. So that's really disappointing that we even have to have this discussion. It's just, you know, X number of days till Election Day, and if we want to humor that sort of political behavior, that's fine. But I think, I think the citizens know better. I think we deserve better from each other. So I, and the idea of trying to jam something in between here and the next meeting, you know what? It feels a little contrived to me. Let's just do it at the next meeting. If that's what we want to do and people can play, this person said that, or this person said that, fine. But I don't think there's any need to jam this in in the next couple of days, so.
I don't, I'm not sure that was discussed, but just my, I guess my two cents before we move on is that although we don't like criticism and certainly don't like to be attacked at the podium, you know, as long as it doesn't violate our rules, the citizens have the right to come up and speak their mind at the podium. So that's the world we live in. And, you know, it's hurtful. It's hurtful to your family. It's hurtful to your kids. But as long as it's within the rules, that's the way it's going to be. Councilman Teetz?
That's not to say discouraging people to talk about whatever they'd like and to talk as much as they'd like. That's fine. But I, personal responsibility and personal restraint, just like there's our rights, there are also responsibilities. And you decide which one you want to work with. But I urge a little bit to the side of restraint in treating people.
I agree with you, Councilman Teetz. I think everybody up here agrees with you. In the ideal world, it would be nice. I think the last meeting was, quite frankly, the best meeting I walked away from in quite some time. But that's the nature of, as long as we abide by the rules that we set by council. So if I could just change the subject and maybe, could we bring Athens Theater back to close the meeting? City Manager Kishnik, just thank you for the emails updating us on the library, the Oakland Airport Master Plan Update, the Asian American Legal Defense and Education Fund. And thank you for the budget overview document, the five-page document, along with the document that was provided tonight. Interesting reading from now until the first study session, which is next Monday, I believe, at 7:30, where we will get our first opportunity to, to look at the budget recommendations. And I'm sure there will be a lively debate and discussion. But thank you for that, those emails. Is there anybody else that would like to make any comments before we move to reports? Any discussion on the reports tonight? I guess the only thing that, a message that maybe I think I heard from council tonight was that after we discussed the hookah license ordinance on the 13th, there may be some, some more comfort in the agreement that was proposed. But in some respect, I guess, once the ordinance is passed, then they're going to have to abide by many of those ordinance regulations. So I look forward to having some teeth in a hookah license ordinance myself. Any further discussion on reports? There are no study items this evening. We will be in recess and reconvene for closed session in the boardroom in five minutes. We're in recess.